The 2021-2022 reorganization meeting of the Harrison Board of Education is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will have a roll call of trustees. Kelly Mulvoy-Mangan.
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr., Lindy Wolverton.
Here.
Norine Lucy.
Here.
Placido Dino-Puccio.
Here.
And trustees-elect Kelly Kozak.
Here.
Dennis DiLorenzo.
Here.
The first order of business is to appoint the district clerk. Do I have a motion to appoint the district clerk?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
We will move to the swearing-in of the trustee-elect. Ms. Kozak, please raise your right hand. You can come over here, yeah. Sorry. You can read from the left.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board trustee according to the best of my judgment.
I, Dennis DiLorenzo, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board trustee. I rest. I'll go back.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
May I have a nomination for board president?
I would like to nominate Kelly Mulvoy-Mangan for president, if she's so willing.
Are there any other nominees? Seeing none, do I have a motion to appoint Kelly Mulvoy-Mangan as board president?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a nomination for board vice president?
I'd like to nominate Kelly Kozak.
Are there any other nominees? Seeing none, do I have a motion to appoint Kelly Kozak as board vice president?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. So, we will move to the swearing-in of the board president and vice president.
Hey, nobody asked Kelly Kozak if she was willing. She was smiling.
You will after Kelly.
I, Kelly Kozak, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board trustee according to the best of my judgment. I, Kelly Kozak, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board vice president according to the best of my judgment.
Dr. Wool, we will swear you in now at the superintendent of schools.
Happen.
Okay. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools according to the best of my judgment.
Well, there's an air of solemnity in the air tonight.
At this time, the reorganization meeting of the Harrison Central School District is turned over to Kelly Mulvoy-Mangan, board president.
Thank you very much. Well done. There we go. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda for the reorganization meeting is appointment of the district treasurer. Do I have a motion to appoint Margaret Medunio, district treasurer, and Tim Whipple, deputy treasurer?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The oath of office will be administered by the district clerk at a later date.
Mr. President, are we, Ms...are you...need to go now?
No, we're going to do Margaret, Tim, and Jean tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay. So, thank you very much, Margot.
Moving on to item eight of the reorganization meeting, appointments and approvals.
You can take all that on consent.
I will take all of those on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing no objections, do I have a motion to approve item eight, appointments and approvals?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Maybe just for the folks watching at home, we would explain that the purpose of the reorganization meeting is to annually reappoint all of those required positions under New York state education law, and the president is going through that process right now, things like our attorneys, our school physician, our auditors, and things of that nature.
Thank you very much. Did we vote on that? I can't remember now.
We did.
We did. Okay. Excellent. Moving on to item nine, I will take that on consent unless anyone objects. Diepens for the appointed positions noted as follows. Are there any objections? Seeing none, do I have a motion for item nine?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to...sorry, do I have a motion to approve item 10, special education appointments? I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve item 10?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Boy, that's a long item, huh?
Sorry, I have to undo this. I apologize. You can't see the...okay. Moving on to item 11, designations, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve item 11, designations?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll take item 12, authorizations on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve item 12, authorizations?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll take item 13 on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, item 13, bonding of personnel, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll take item 14 on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, item 14, other items, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 15, do I have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are...the reorganization meeting is adjourned. All right. Do I have a motion to open the July 6, 2021, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We have one set...actually, we should do a roll call. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have an administrative matter to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Do I have a motion to reopen the July 6, 2021, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we begin, I'd just like to let...remind everyone, as the current guidance on masking is that in a school setting where there are not students or children around, you may be unmasked if you are fully vaccinated. So, just to let everyone know what the rules under which we are operating. We have one set of minutes to accept. Those are the minutes from the June 16, 2021, meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. That brings me to my update. I will be very quick because we have a very long agenda. I want...I'm sure Dr. Wool will share some information about our final days of the past school year and graduations and things. I would like to say, not only on behalf of the board, but also on behalf of the four members of the Board of Education who had students graduate from Harrison High School this year, how incredibly grateful we are to everyone who was part of putting together a really wonderful ceremony. When I find out who it was that arranged for the most perfect weather in the month of June on the days we had graduation, I will in particular thank them, but it was really just a fantastic series of events. Members of the board were really thrilled to be able to participate in each of the gradu...the moving ups at the elementary schools, the L.M.K. moving up, as well as the high school graduation ceremonies, and they really were just terrific. So, thank you to everyone and also to everyone from the Harrison community who participated. We, as always...oh, I guess that's who we thanked for the weather.
There you go. He's the one who's in charge.
As always, we want to thank the Harrison Police Department. Their support in getting hundreds of people in and out of Harrison High School for all of our ceremonies was just absolutely invaluable. So, thank you, as always, to them. We also continue to have just remarkable student athletes. They are no longer...I don't even think we can still call them seniors at Harrison High School, but twins Connor and David Grif, who graduated a week and a half ago, were recognized as the Lo-Ha at Westchester-Putnam Athletes of the Year for Tennis. They won their section title just a couple days before graduation. So, congratulations to them. That's really just a terrific accomplishment. And I was also excited to see that the Harrison High School Fitness and Performing...Performance Center is...started their summer training program that's running 6:00 to 7:45 in the morning, and there's a ton of new equipment that the Harrison Education Foundation helped them to purchase, and athletes can participate by signing up through the Google Classroom for the fit pack. So, thanks so much to everyone who are supporting our student athletes all through the year. That's it for me.
As always, you're the best and most mindful person on our Twitter feed. Thanks for paying close attention.
My kids would crack off if I heard you say that.
So, welcome to our first July meeting, the end of a school year. Just want to take a pause and, first of all, thank the board for incredible stewardship over one of the most challenging school years in history. I think without your support and determination, I certainly would have struggled to get through this. Your willingness to take the right road, not the easy road, is reflected in all of the happy faces you saw over the last week and a half. And also, as always, thank you for always being at every event, participating directly and indirectly, and for your extraordinary words to kids and to our community and to our faculty and to our staff, who you never forget. And that doesn't go unnoticed, and it's a rare quality for people to be collected in this way that all have such a selfless approach to this work, and I hope you are as proud of yourselves as I am honored to work with you. Doesn't get said often enough. Mrs. Kozak, thank you for running again and getting re-elected. We appreciate you willing to do this again and giving up time with your three children. And Mr. DiLorenzo, I don't know if I should thank you or send you to a psychiatrist. As you start, you finish your 15th year and begin your sixth term. So, now, in my 20 years, you are the first trustee to ever embark upon a sixth term. So, that's quite a testament to your fortitude, let us say. And now, just a moment to celebrate, as Mrs. Mangan said, what magnificent graduations. They couldn't really have been any better. We did get perfect weather. It wasn't too hot. It wasn't too cold. It didn't rain. We didn't have a windstorm, but the spirit and the heart of our entire learning community was on display. I don't think I've ever enjoyed graduations more than I did seeing and being with the kids on those few days, although three in one day is a lot. I did...I'm one shy of 140 graduation speeches. I can't wait to break my 140th. There must be a prize there. But we did have one of our largest graduating senior classes, just under 300 kids, 206...
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight kids, 266 at the middle school. These are huge classes. The level of academic achievement was astounding under these circumstances. But what made me probably feel better than anything else was the deep connection I feel to our kids and the amount of gratitude that our students showed to adults. What an incredible lesson for adults to learn, how to be grateful, how to appreciate what your community provides. And I think I said to the audience in all six of my speeches that we need to look to our kids for an example of what it means to be humane, to live with dignity, to live with respect for one another, and to stop choosing sides and to start listening, because I see that example every day living in the lives of our kids and in our schools. And we're now embarked on a new, hopefully better, timeframe. Hopefully, COVID is behind us. We don't know yet, as Mrs. Mangan mentioned, the mask protocols for schools when adults are in them are vastly different than the protocols for schools with adults and children. Dr. Laidwick will tell you that he had to contact trace in an elementary school on the very last day of school. So, COVID has not gone away. I'm going to say to everybody, I'm advocating that if you haven't gotten your vaccination and you're eligible, get it. Those of you who have watched me over the years, but particularly this year, know I pride myself on one thing, doing my homework. There's absolutely no question in my mind that the Delta variant poses a risk to adults and children. We need to work together to keep our schools open and safe, and that fight is not over. So, stay with us, stay focused, do what's in the best interest of your children, of yourself, and of your neighbor. We are inextricably linked. If we did not learn that lesson, then COVID didn't teach us what it was supposed to. Now, on a happy, much happier note, we've already begun our summer programs for kids, and today, I welcome for the first time to our meeting our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Lisa Mulholland, welcome, and our new Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Mr. Timothy Whipple. And Lisa and I had a chance today to visit the high school. We watched a STEAM program for rising sixth graders. It was absolutely phenomenal, and it was designed by one of our high school science teachers, working in concert with middle school teachers, the kind of collaboration that we love to see. As you know, we'll be servicing almost 1,500 children this summer in all kinds of enrichment programs. If you're not sure and didn't enroll, there's...not all the programs are closed, so go on our website, take a look, or give us a call, talk to your principal. We're happy to help you if we can. The rules for the summer will be pretty coherent and strict. You're still going to have to check in with Crisis Go every day, still going to have to wear your mask when you're indoors, when you're outdoors, you'll be able to take it off, but we still need to protect you and our faculty. All the rules for contact tracing remain in effect. We're also very excited that we'll be running about 70 courses of professional learning for our teachers that's already underway. Mrs. Egan, who was the assistant principal here, has been promoted to the Director of World Languages in ENL, has already taught her first course in that role, and there'll be more professional learning going on. I know the PTA shared with parents all the courses that we are offering for kids and for teachers. The reason we want to remind you of that is we are a 24/7 school district. We like 7-Eleven. We never close. We're always actively engaged. We are still finalizing the hiring, although we're very close. Dr. Laidwick assures me we've got a really good lead on almost every position that we need to fill. We are monitoring enrollment carefully in the event we need to add teachers. We are prepared at a moment's notice to do so. So, I look back on the school year and think, oh, my goodness, that was a challenge, but what a fantastic success story about a community pulling together. Our faculty was incredible, although tired. Our administrative team was incredible, although exhausted. And tomorrow, we begin a process of renewal. We'll have our annual retreat where we set our goals for the coming year. So, thank the community, thank the school board, thank my colleagues, thank our faculty and staff. You know, you mentioned the Harrison Police Department, incredible partners with us, but also our security folks over the last few days of graduation were phenomenal. Between our aides and our security people, we had more than 5,000 or 6,000 people enter and exit that campus on a given day seamlessly. So, what we did and what we have to be proud of is something we can all look back on and say, while it was tough, we did it well and we did it right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I was remiss. I did not open the meeting to public participation, so...I will now open the meeting to public participation, seeing none. I also would just like to mention to the board, if you would please let me or Mrs. Kozak know if you would like to remain in your current subcommittee assigned...board committee assignments, or if you would like a change, please let us know. That was good lightning. Please let me know, let one of us know what your preferences would be for the following...for this upcoming year, and we will work to finalize those assignments over the coming few weeks, as we have work that needs to be done in all those areas. I also just wanted to remind the board that we have information about the work that's going on with students as well as professional development, so if board members want to participate or see any of those, please do so.
Madam President, I apologize. I was remiss. I got a question today. We apologize for the delay in posting the videos and the photographs of the graduations. There was a problem with the videos. We have them, and sometime tomorrow, you can find them, and we will be sending out a notice to everybody to make you aware that they're available for your download and viewing purposes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the personnel agenda. I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing no objections, item one, certificated personnel, A, resignation, B, regular appointment, SED clearance received, C, temporary appointment, SED clearance received, D, extra compensation appointments, SED clearance received, E, extra compensation appointments, SED clearance received, F, summer school appointments, SED clearance received, G, change of status, H, request for leave of absence without pay, Roman numeral two, non-certificated personnel, A, resignation for the purpose of retirement, B, resignation, C, termination, D, regular appointment, SED clearance received, E, temporary appointment, SED clearance received, F, summer school appointments... F, summer school appointments, SED clearance received. G, change of status. Roman numeral three, other. A, acknowledgement of student/teacher. B, contracted services providers. C, amendment to agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the administrative report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. Item one, acceptance of gift from the Harrison Avenue School Japanese Committee. Item two, acceptance of gift from a Genron Science Talent Search Society for Science and the Public. Item three, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. Item four, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. Item five, CSC CPSC annual review. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? Just that on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the Harrison Avenue School Japanese Committee for their generous donation to the Harrison Avenue School. They are such terrific partners and members of our community, and we're really grateful for their gift. And we also want to recognize again and thank the Society for Science and the Public for their gift...well, it's really not a gift. It was earned.
It was one.
It was one. It was one, but we thank them actually for supporting science students and science programs in education. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the finance report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. Item one, 2020-21 appropriation transfers. Item two, 2021-22 appropriation transfers. Item three, 2021-22 tax warrant. Item four, treasurer's report, May 2021. Item five, internal audit reports. Item six, approval of agreement for internal claims auditing services. Item seven, internal auditing services risk assessment. Item eight, tax sorcery Lucy Klingenstein, Tax Map Number 961-11. Item nine, contract for educational services, Irvington UFSD. Item 10, contract for educational services, the Center for Discovery, Inc. Item 11, contract for educational services, Green Chimneys Children's Services, Inc. Item 12, contract for non-resident tuition students per Soundshore Consortium Agreement Byram Hills. Item 13, contract for educational services, Clearview School. Item 14, contract for special education services, Summit School, NIAAC. Item 15, contract for special education services, New York School for the Deaf. Item 16, contract for special education services, Hawthorne Country Day School. Item 17, contract for special education services, cerebral palsy. Item 18, contract for special education services, Greenberg North Castle UFSD. Item 19, contract for health services, New Rochelle City School District. Item 20, contract extension, RFP Number 2018-3 IT Support Services. Item 21, approval of contract, Stewart Amusement Company, Inc. Item 22, disposal of equipment. Item 23, disposal of equipment. Item 24, contract for special education services, Mountain Lake Academy. Item 25, approval of the plan document for the Southern Westchester Schools Workers' Compensation Cooperative. Item 26, contract extension, RFB 1920-01 Trash and Recycling Collection Bulk Karting. Item 27, contract extensions. Item 28, contract for special education services, Andrews Children's Center. Item 29, contract extension, RFB Number 20/21-01 Reconditioning and Storage of Athletic Equipment. Item 30, authorization to purchase Apple product line from Apple Computer, Inc. Item 31, authorization to purchase from the online marketplace for the purchase of products and services from Amazon Business. Item 32, authorization to purchase technology equipment products and services from CDW Government LLC. Item 33, approval to purchase maintenance and hardware supplies from Home Depot USA, Inc. Item 34, approval to purchase technology solutions from Dell Marketing LP. Item 35, approval to purchase electrical contra...I'm sorry, excuse me. Item 35, authorization to purchase electrical products and LED products from Graybar. Do I have a motion to approve the finance report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions...sorry, questions or comments? Actually, I have a comment, which was I was in reviewing, preparing for the meeting, I was beyond excited to see that we were going...we reviewed and approved the contract for the LMK, for the carnival, the EEC carnival this fall, and if that's a sign that we may be close to...we won't say normal or the back, but something good and new. That will be fabulous, so hopefully we'll have weather like graduation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes the regular business meet, July 6, 2021, regular business meeting. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be July 28, 2021, here in the auditorium of the Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Thank you.